Just wanted to check, see if you're all set up.
But eventually, eventually, yeah, we get back to doing notations, patient files. Eventually.
Alright, it is now four o'clock on June twenty ninth nineteen eighty six, we'll be getting our council meeting. Uh, would anyone like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
If you don't do it, you're a weirdo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and justice for all.
Justice for a handful of rich people.
Basically.
God bless America.
Woo, America.
I love America.
America is pretty good. It's great.
When it wants to be. Not a communist.
That's good to know. Alright, hello everyone, uh, Merrick Brown here. Couple things I want to report on. First is I've been busy with working on multiple pieces of legislation, um, those primarily being making amendments to the constitution under the healthcare act as well as the business act. Um, I also am currently writing up a tax bill to tax the, um, the three big businesses in the city, those being Dyn C eight, uh, Bennys as well as PDM in order to get a, uh, sufficient budget for city hall, the DOJ, as well as the AG's office. So that money would be used towards, um, you know, citywide events or helping come up with some, uh, some grants for businesses, help people, you know, to pay their employees as well as, yeah, employment as well as, uh, something else that I'm currently working on, which is trying to get more people interested in the Department of Justice and try to recruit more lawyers into the, uh, into the city. So we're gonna various incentive programs for, uh, potential new lawyers and current lawyers. So unfortunately, I don't have anything to present on this week, next week, everything should be done. I just need to talk with a couple people still regarding those, but until that happens, I won't bring it to the floor. So hopefully by this next meeting, I'll have everything written out and made public.
A question for you, Justin Bradford, um, would that also be able to encompass, um, government-funded, like, like ourselves, fire department? We don't have a budget?
Yes, yes, this, this would also fall under.
We don't have a budget, so we, we have to like work and fundraise to everything we wanna do. So if we wanna be able to buy equipment or anything like that, whether it comes out of our personal paycheck or we have to fundraise for that to happen, there's no way for fire to make money.
Yes, yes, alright. Yeah, it's all, it's going towards government entities.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, then I'll, uh, open the floor up to the council members.
He sounded very enthusiastic about it.
He had mine done first here.
Don't question me.
Huh? Oh, sorry, I was.
Good afternoon, everybody, uh, Timothy Bradford. Um, here. Sorry, I'm still coming over a cold, so I'm trying to get all my thoughts together, uh, but there's a piece of legislation I've been, uh, working on or an amendment to the current legislation. So currently, our highway speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour. Uh, I have come up with an amendment and drafted a change to sixty-five miles an hour for highways. With the increase in safety with airbags being more introduced and more streamlining, uh, anti-ABS, which is anti-lock brake systems being more readily available, uh, cars being safer, um, with crumple zones and then the enactment of seat belts in vehicles. I don't see why on the highways, we cannot increase that speed limit and help people get places faster. It takes a while to go from south to north, north to south, and that increment on that highway change would help the city immensely. Um, I do have the amendment drafted here. If anyone from the public would like to see, it is a simple drafting, it's not changing any limits on anything else, not county or, or city, but just a simple highway change from fifty-five to sixty-five. Any questions?
Yes.
I know in the past, the chief justice's issue, or at least one of them was, oh, you're just talking about highway, not in city, right?
Not in city, just highway, just the highway speeds. So it would be, and if, and if it needs to be more specific, it, it would be Great Ocean Highway, that outer road there. Um, me, look at my map here in one second.
So basically the freeway, yeah, the freeways and highways, anywhere there's not any stop or yield signs, right?
Absolutely, freeways and highways only. I'm not looking to change the world, I'm just trying to get the speed limits on the highways adjusted so it's easier to get from north to south because that's where a lot of those roads come from.
Don't officers, don't officers only enforce, uh, sixty-five and over already? So if.
Uh, to, to my knowledge, it's fifty-five. It, it's written in the law, it's fifty-five.
Right, it's written as fifty-five and the officers said that they don't enforce it unless it's over ten over. So you can go sixty-five and forty-five in city, like, in city, it's only thirty-five, but they only enforce over forty-five.
So wouldn't it be better to update the legislation to where it is binding or makes it easier instead of going off of somebody's word? Cause they can change that anytime the way it's set currently. But here, the legislation can be adjusted to where it is, that is what it is. So I'm just making a simple amendment change from fifty-five to sixty-five on the highway. And if no one disagrees, if you would like to see the bill, I would like to bring it to the floor to a vote and bring it up to chief justice. It's nothing major that I think, or there's, I think everyone understands the, the change here. And I think it could be something we could push through fairly easily on our end.
Okay.
Any other questions? That'll be it for me.
Alright. Next, uh, whoever else is up?
Well, are we gonna bring it to the floor to vote on it?
Uh, if I'm correct, since I brought it up, I don't think I can bring it to the floor to a vote, if I'm correct?
Motion to bring it to a vote?
Let's see, you said it's in the.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Okay, let's, let's have our vote.
Has anybody read the legislation out loud?
I would like to read it real quick if I could.
Get me, fix myself real quick, there we go.
I'm assuming it's the same legislation with just adjustments to sixty-five.
I, I've already made the adjustments in there for highway only. Cause I, I did, I did have this conversation with the chief justice and I did make that amendment because we were having this back and forth and he made some very good points, so I hope I adjusted it to where he would, where it would get passed through him, but for us, it is only highway and, uh, it's, anyone's a better reader than I am. I, like I said, my throat's still scratchy for him this week. It's updated in the system, I can put it there again.
Alright, let me take a look at this. Okay, so this is, so this would be amendment to public law, number one, section one, amendment to speed limits. So it's currently says, no person may drive a vehicle upon a highway at a speed of greater than fifty-five miles per hour, and this will be changing to say no person may drive a vehicle upon a highway at a speed of greater than sixty-five miles per hour. That is the only change that to, in this amendment.
That is correct. And the amendment itself, uh, that I have, it's a subject, uh, some subsections B, C, and D, which is the city, Blaine County, and, uh, D would be the roadways would all remain the same. And only we would change A, that's where we have the subsection A for the change to sixty-five. And I can show the public as well, let me put this down here.
Okay. Okay, and then, uh, now that we have read it out loud, everyone, do you still want to push your motion, Mr. Daynob?
Yes, and there's the, for anyone in the public who needs to see it.
If anyone wants to see it, got it copied down right here.
Sorry, 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 excuse me, excuse me. Yeah, just wanna read it real quick, that's all.
Like I said, it's, for my copy, it's just changing fifty-five to sixty-five. Okay, and then Polly, did you still second the motion?
I did.
Okay. Then we can bring this up, we can bring this up to a vote then. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, hit me back, hit me back.
I can't, there's, there's camera.
Damn it.
The quorum.
Quorum, that's ten, ten dollars in the jar?
Piece of paper in my hand.
Excuses.
Uh, howdy, the jar's in my pocket, so I'll collect that later.
Okay.
No, he deserves it.
Oh, well, thank you.
He likes it, okay.
So.
I'm just kidding.
Alright, so the amendment to public law one has passed and we'll bring that up to judicial review. Okay.
Did you not say that the, uh, that it had already had judicial review?
No, I did my own review with judiciary to, uh, try and persuade him to get him on board.
Okay, okay, so Benny has seen it.
Vinny has seen it, yes.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Next to city councilperson?
I have been working on some stuff. I am just waiting on a couple of meetings with certain individuals, but they have had a pretty packed schedule and some of them are currently on LOA. So I have not gotten a chance to finalize some stuff, but when I have a chance, I will bring it up.
Okay, did, did you wanna talk about it at all? Just of what you're working on?
I'm just currently looking over some of the self-defense law stuff, trying to see if we can add on maybe self-defensive property and just kind of rewording it a little bit so it's clear to understand to the people. Cause I know there's been a lot of questions with how it works, what, you know, lines cross the, you know, what crosses that line of self-defense and vigilanteism, so if I could help make it a little clearer for people and maybe add a couple of things to it, I would, we'd like to do that. And I'm also working on this with Ms. Casey King.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, we'll look forward to next week, hopefully when you, after you have your meetings to discuss it more. Okay, next to city councilperson?
I guess so. Alright, Casey King. I'm, uh, working on um, a division act. Is this okay?
Yes.
Yeah, you sound great.
I, I'm working on, uh, the tourism, uh, act. Basically would be creating a division within the mayor, mayoral office. It's called the San Andreas Division of Travel and Tourism. Um, this division is to increase the revenue of the state and provide more employment opportunities for its citizens. Um, and it's, within this division, there would be a committee and that committee is, would be, uh, set up to formulate a plan of action for the development of the tourism, uh, industry. Um, and in that act, it is to establish programs, agencies, and resources to provide high-quality service to its visitors and citizens to protect the natural beauty of San Andreas by promoting and expanding the economic health tourism industry within, with events and advertisements for television, radio, and print. Um, the way I see it, the division would consist of a director and a committee that would be appointed by the mayor with the input of city council. And this committee would include one city council member, a representative from the lodging sector, a representative from the food service sector, a representative of the entertainment and amusement sector, uh, and a representative of outdoor recreation. And, uh, like I said, they would create a plan of action for job opportunities, improve neighborhoods, uh, by creating wholesome recreational activities, uh, prove and protect our shorelines, uh, promote public beaches, fishing sites, hiking trail, um, and other scenic areas. They could also promote culture, holidays, observances, festivities, and lastly, cooperate with the Department of Education to promote education throughout the state. So, um, that's just a summary of the act that I am working on. Sorry if it was too long.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So in it, you say that there's gonna be several representatives from these various groups? How would those be selected?
By the mayor.
Okay, so it's just.
With the input of the council.
Okay.
So with expanding on that, uh, by the mayor with input of the council, so he would just have, he would just take our input on it, but he would have ultimate choice? Uh, no check, no balance on that? Cause what if he picks somebody and then we all disagree with somebody else? It just depurs back to him?
Well, I mean, this is why I'm talking, you know, bringing it to, to talk about, um, I talking with, uh, our last mayor, it was supposed to be a, uh, the director would be a hired position within the mayor or office. So he would actually be, um, hiring the director.
So only the director would be hired to the city? Or would this be a city job?
Yes, the director would be a city job, the committee would, uh, would not be.
What makes the director, what job entails that the director is going to get paid for? So what, what are they doing that they're getting paid for, but the other committee members who are, I'm assuming are gonna put in the maybe a little bit less time than director? What, what difference do you say, though? No pay scale to pay scale?
Uh, the director's gonna be involved with the advertising, um, the marketing, um, actually probably having to hire different media resources, um, it would be in charge of, they would be in charge of the budget. They would, I mean, it'd be a whole division that they would be, um, in charge of.
At least to me, it sounds like you could think of it similar as the director, as the mayor, and the rest of the committee as the city council.
Yes.
You guys aren't paid for your work, but you still are helping out.
Uh, it, I would also envision that they would, it would be, uh, also helping with advertising throughout the whole, uh, United States, we, we'll go eventually. Cause we want more visitors, we want, we want, you know, more population, and it's just to, uh, help with that.
So where are you currently at with the, uh, with the legislation?
Um, I would like to, um, see if I could ref- refining it, I, I guess a bit, um, I would like to just have more discussion about it and get input. I do have everything written out, it's just refining everything. And I believe I have put it in the, uh, fall academy, uh, the beginning of the week.
How would you try and go about staffing, uh, said, um, go with department?
Yes.
So I'm assuming if people are a part of this, if I'm correct, tourism board? I'm trying to make sure I say this correctly, um, are the employees, the regular day-to-day people that are doing the tours, are they gonna be getting paid at all?
Right now? Uh, that's a good question.
How were they?
I haven't, I was eventually, I think, uh, were employees within that uh, division. Cause I'm imagining there would have to be I don't know if we would hire out a media division or if the city would have its own media division, and if it did have its own media division, I would assume that that would be another city, um.
Would our media division not be the public news that we already have? Is that not?
I'm talking about someone, no, I'm talking about someone that would actually like create, let's say, commercials or, uh, actually like creating everything to put out, to give to, uh, like, like, let's say, Weasel or whatever.
Interesting, okay.
Like, uh, like graphics design person or a, you know, like, cause that's all gonna have to be outsourced if we don't have it within the, the division.
So like public broadcasting, right?
No, I'm talking about, I'd still use the, what we have in the city to, to get it out there, but you need someone to c- create it. To have a plan to, you know, actually do the graphic design, to actually, um, write script, this, the, the script for the commercial or whatever. You need someone to plan the events to, you know, all that kind of stuff, which is what the committee would do, but you actually need people to create those advertising materials.
If all this, what it sounds like is someone's gonna have to be paid for all this, what, what are you looking at budget-wise? Because are you looking to increase taxes to, to get the budget you need for this or?
The, the whole part promotion is to help the city to, to.
No, no, for sure, but you would still need a budget for this to happen.
Absolutely, 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 but it's a city, it be within the city. I'm, I haven't, this is why I'm bringing it to the floor, I'm like, I would like some more input, and like I said, I'm still refining things. And, uh, as far as budgets go and everything, I would rather talk to someone who knows more about that than, than what I do.
Again, this is, from what she's proposing, it's gonna fall under the city hall, mayoral division, so the budget would be coming from the mayor's office.
No, for sure, I was just trying to see what kind of rough numbers we're looking at that it would take out of the city budget. Um, just shooting for the stars. What you would think to allocate towards it, or have allocated towards it?
That would depend on what's being worked on, I'm assuming. It's like any other business or any other to, you know, other divisions.
It depends on the income also.
Well, it's a service.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a paid position, but I mean, it will be entailed, it will entail a lot. So that's the only reason I had suggested that.
No, for sure, and no, and nobody's time's free, and I, and I don't want, I don't want that thing, we're just, we're just trying to figure out some kind of number-wise, what we're looking around, because these are things that can be brought forth, for, for that, especially bringing a whole new branch, a whole new division under the city wing, when right now, we, to be honest, we barely have a city wing.
Agreed.
Cause right now, it looks like we're looking to expand and we haven't even grown what we have within.
Well, one possibility then.
Yeah, but see, this is, could be a, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Like, for example, we just said we need more peers in the city, right? Well, that's something that, uh, this division would help to promote, to help get the word out there, to give more attention to certain things like that. It's just a, a tool to help us, I, I feel like gain more people around, to gain more visitors and citizens.
Uh, I'm on board, I'm not, I'm not against the, the tourism board, uh, this is something that's been brought up, I think, a couple times before even by Daynob himself. Um, I'm just trying to get more specifics, what your, your plan is to tackle it, what we're looking at, um, how we're gonna try and staff it. Cause right now, I, if I'm correct, there's businesses bleeding right now with hardly any staff. So I just wanna know how we're gonna get that, because right now, we don't even have lawyers, whether we do, but very, many, very few, fairly of city hall workers. So how are you gonna find people that are gonna wanna do these things?
I think that's what she's actually aiming for, is to try and bring people in who actually wanna do it. I mean, I know it's kind of the cart before the horse, but it might actually work, I don't know.
Well, in that case, I'm just one vote, I mean, I'm voting against it or anything, but just wanted to know more and I think the more we flesh it out, the better it'll be. And I think it is something that is needed in the city, so I, I back you on this. I just wanna know, wanted to know what else you had, uh, for it.
Right, for sure, and I'm just bringing forward, uh, just my ideas and what I, you know, just giving some sort of structure to it, but I would, maybe next week, we can, or this week, we can, you know, discuss more, cause I, you know, like I said, right now, it's just refining, uh, maybe it does need stuff taken out or stuff put in, so any input would be great.
Yeah, honestly, to me, it just sounds like another department, like, like fire, PD, you know, it's just another part of the government.
I think it'll be more accurate to associate this more similar to the BRB. So it's a division within City Hall, working at recruiting and promoting the city. And, and making said promotions to try to incentivize people to move here.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Casey. We could talk more about that.
Sorry.
More about the specifics after the meeting.
Thank you.
By the way, Casey sounded great through that whole thing.
Guess I'm next. Do I? I feel like I should face this way. Anyways, I am Councilman Daniel De Leon. I'm bringing up a bill I'm working on for a helmet law. Basically, it's pretty simple. All riders and passengers are required to wear a helmet when riding a motorcycle or motorcycle, motorized bicycle. And I just want to bring it up for discussion amongst the people.
Can you stay at the podium?
I was just giving it to the people.
With you bringing up this law, do you have anything for review?
What do you mean for review? I just-
He's still writing it. This is just what he's working-
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up. I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
But he's just bringing it up. Okay, I thought he had somewhere already written.
Would this, is this only including motorized bikes, or would this also include mechanical bikes such as BMX and scorchers and such?
Um, motorized.
So we're talking motorcycles, like people riding down the street on their motorcycles would have to wear a helmet?
Yes.
Are you high?
I mean-
Well, can you, can you please step forward to the microphone? Can you, can you step forward to the microphone?
No, no, I'm, I'm not entertaining this any more than necessary. Someone else can stand up with a microphone. Thank you.
I just want to know what you were saying. I'm sorry, if you can speak up.
Nope, I am all set. I, I was simply asking if he was high in expecting people to ride motorcycles and have to wear helmets. But I have said all I'm going to say.
I mean, it's for public safety, so I mean, if you're good to, that's fine.
Uh, is there a special type of helmet you're going to have to wear? These like graded helmets, or there's just any helmet? Can I wear a hat?
Well, a hat's not a helmet. It'd be, it'd be like a, you know, like a safety helmet.
Like a, well, there's bicycle kid safety helmets. Would that, would that work? What grades the helmet for it to be safe for the road?
It'd be, I guess, motorcycle road grade. I don't make helmets. I don't know what different grades are. I mean, there's motorcycle helmets and then there's bicycle helmets, so I mean, obviously, probably not a bicycle helmet.
Have you reached out to the motorcycle clubs and asked their input on wearing helmets, since they're the, you know, avid riders?
Uh, no, I'm just, this is just being brought up for discussion here, so if there's anybody anybody here that wants to voice their opinion, they're welcome. I haven't written anything. I'm, I want to bring it up for discussion. This isn't like set in stone or anything.
I feel like this is going to be a wildly unpopular decision if this-
All right, Daniel, I have a question for you. Are you a medical professional?
Um, I wouldn't call myself-
Okay, your hesitation is enough, thank you. Do you ride motorcycles? Excellent. Do you ride motorcycles?
Yes, I do.
Frequently?
Um, when I'm feeling like a nice ride, yeah.
So in the city where we've barely got the seatbelt laws in place, you think that having motorcycle clubs and anybody out riding, controlling what they do, what they have to wear while they're out riding? I, I'm just curious where you think this is going to be a popular opinion?
I never said it was a popular opinion. It's for public safety and if you don't want to wear a helmet, then there's consequences.
Right, how does your not wearing a helmet impact other people on the road, though? Wouldn't it only impact the person themselves?
Yes, because riding motorcycles are very dangerous.
Walking down the street is dangerous.
Then if you want to wear a helmet, wear a helmet. Don't force it on others.
You're more likely to get injured riding a motorcycle than walking down the street.
Uh, heavy, do you have statistics? Yeah, do you have any statistics or anything to back up your opinion?
We would need statistics on that, because stating common sense is not-
Do you have statistics of fatalities of motorcycle riders versus, you know, motorcycle riders with helmets? Do you have those kinds of statistics? Do you have injuries, statistics, you know, various differences? Okay.
So no statistics? Sometimes you do medical things, sometimes you go for a ride, but this is something that you feel needs to be implemented for everybody in the city?
Yes, I mean, every time I go for a ride, I'm wearing a helmet.
Good for you. I'm really proud, and you're probably not going to hurt yourself doing that. I think that you should probably just keep it to you. That's just my personal opinion as a person who lives in the city, not as someone, you know, like a councilperson who represents other people.
Well, you'd be, I'm welcoming everyone to discuss it and, and vote on it whenever the time comes.
I will be happy to hand the podium over to somebody else.
Again, I'd like to see the statistics.
Uh, hello, hello. So we live in an era where we have the right and freedom to express ourselves in any which way. A law where we are required to wear a helmet when we're out on the road on our motorbikes feels like it would impede on such a freedom. So, you know, I'm very much against it personally. I've got a lot of experience riding on motorbikes. In fact, we had a charitable ride recently. It was twenty of us out on the road in formation. Not one person was wearing a helmet, and there was no major incidents.
Well, you almost hit me multiple times.
So I, I'm, you know, I'm just saying, I feel like that would impede on our freedom and right to express ourselves in any which way we want to. That is all.
Okay.
So while I can see what you're trying to accomplish by implementing public safety, I think that it is clear just from the few people who've spoken, that this would be wildly unpopular. People are going to feel like you are pushing your personal agenda onto them. They're going to feel that you were trying to take away their right to make decisions about what they're wearing and how they're wearing it. So I, for one, have to stand up and say I, I would not support this.
Okay.
I appreciate the thought, man.
I mean, there's a reason we call them brain buckets.
Next we'll have a law against smoking inside of buildings.
Oh God, that would be ridiculous.
Yeah, that's going a little too far.
That's what I'm saying.
Hey, it all starts somewhere.
Any other comments? Questions from anyone? Okay. Thank you, Daniel. Right, I think we have Pa- Polly and, and Robert.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay.
Yeah, I want to apologize for being so extremely quiet. I, I believe Councilman Bradford may have sneezed in my general direction last week and I've felt like total crap ever since, so I've just been sitting here saving my voice. I have no-
Those accusations there?
I-
Accusing me?
I said may have. I have no proof to, to say you did it. Could it happen? We, we were talking the other day. I don't know.
I deny those statements.
Well, I have nothing.
Wait, sorry, can you repeat that?
We're striking that from the record.
Why is he, why is he broadcasting? What?
What?
Why are you talking on your radio?
Oh, it's accidental.
Okay, then I'll open up the floor to, to members of the city. If you have anything you want to bring forward, ask about requests, comments, anything.
So I think it's a given that there is a lack of law enforcement entities in the city right now. Um, because of this, I feel like punishment would need to be increased on those who are repeat offenders, especially those who assault members of our city. They cannot just, you know, spend time in jail, come out and then do the same thing, or feel like they should do the same thing, or feel like that the repercussions aren't enough for them to stop doing so. Because especially for those who work at the hospital, you know, we do have to deal with members of our city being assaulted out on the streets and then seeing sane people over and over again committing these heinous acts. I think that something needs to be pushed for repeat offenders, so, you know, they're more or less likely to be less inclined to repeat such actions. I mean, obviously, hardened criminals are not, you know, going to pay any attention, but perhaps an increase in jail time for those who choose to do so may, you know, dissuade them from continuing.
I will say that there is in the Constitution, Public Law Number Nine, serial violent offenders, which states that no person shall commit or attempt to commit the same violent offense against the same individual organization, excluding government agencies within twenty-four hour period. And if they do so, then the, I believe the the duration of incarceration is increased by threefold. So there is something there, but we have actually discussed this amongst a few of us, guarding that specific public law and opening it up to, instead of just being a twenty-four hour period, which could be considered a repeat um, offense. Open, uh, expanding that to either seventy-two hours or forty-
Bring back not letting them sleep their time off.
That-
Yeah, I think we, there should be, I was, I was going to say, was there any discussion about maybe a program being put in place for such offenders to actually uh, provide services slash work towards the city, so they're actually contributing, like, you know, contributing something instead of just sleeping their time off in, in their cells. I mean, obviously, that would require manpower from the law department and those who may choose to work at a prison, so I understand it's easier said than done. But I still think there needs to be such things put in place. Because then it would also take the workload of, of, you know, some people that have multiple jobs and are trying to focus on one job in particular.
I, I think the increase in the, for right now, due to the lack of, uh, I'm going to say resources, uh, we have, I think, right now would probably be the best if we were to look at the time duration of that offense.
Yeah.
So like you were saying, twenty-four hour, but I do understand what you're saying of having like, uh, public services done, or what is it called? Community service?
Yeah, community service.
I don't, I don't think we have the resources to fund community service at this time.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I don't think that's realistic. But the-
No, not currently.
Time can be, the time can be looked at and possibly adjusted with legislation.
Well, that is all anyways. That's my concerns, to be honest, but I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to, to discuss?
Oh, good.
Okay.
Gavel, gavel.
Gavel, gavel, gavel. Thank you everyone for, for attending.
Yayo. Alright.
Yep, absolutely. I was wondering, since I'm back now, when would you like to do some training with me?
Oh, well, we can do it now.
Is that you, Cody?